Our August 11th meeting of the Wheat Ridge City Councils, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Janelle, please give us roll call.
Jerry DiTullio.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Zach Urban.
Present.
George Pon.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
And Ms. Davis has informed me that she would be absent tonight.
Thank you. Any changes to the minutes of July 28? Mr. DiTullio?
I move to approve the minutes of July 28, 2014.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Starker. Pull the council, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move right into proclamations and ceremonies. We have a presentation from the Wheat Ridge High School Farmers 5000 Committee. Do you want to come to the microphone and give us your name? Michelle.
Hi, I'm Michelle Del Piccolo with the Wheat Ridge High School Farmers 5000. I'm here with McGarrett Pollan and Becky Hawthorne. We just wanted to thank you for your generous sponsorship of our race this year. As part of your sponsorship, you're entitled to shirts, which we brought for all of you, and you'll see your beautiful little logo on the back there. We also have a thank you letter from our committee, and I've included some flyers. We encourage all of you to register for the race and to maybe talk to your neighbors and let's get as much of the community out. It's on September 14 at the high school at 9:00 a.m. and start training.
We'll all be training, right, September 14? Yeah, let's put that on our calendar here. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to citizens' right to speak. These are items that are not on tonight's agenda. Hurry. Oh, gosh, we've got lots of them. Okay, has somebody come here to speak? I see we have several people this signed up. I've already got one. Please give your name and address, spell your last name for the record.
Yes, my name is Rachel Hultin, and my last name is spelled H-U-L-T-I-N, and my address is 4690 Balsam Street. And I just want to thank council for their leadership on the Pier Street bike lanes that are supposed to start construction a week from today, which means in about two weeks, we will have dedicated bike facilities for riders of all ages and abilities that will help connect riders from the north side to the south side of Wheat Ridge. And I, for one, am really excited, and I just want to thank you for your vision and your leadership and commitment on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Gina Halasy. And I'm passing, we're passing around the 3D press kit that's going to go out to the TV stations on Wednesday for the 45th Annual Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival. So I wanted you to take a peek at it and see all the fun things in there, and hopefully the kettle corn will get them to open it. I'm positive. So I just wanted to thank you once again for sponsoring the Zope Italian Family Circus. The Zopes rolled into town last night, and we're waiting on the tent. It'll be here tomorrow, and we'll have a tent raising on Wednesday. So we're very excited. Everything's on track. We have a fresh new look for the festival. We've been marrying everything for the last three years, and I think we have officially married the two. So it's been wonderful. We have doubled our efforts on marketing. We actually did a Denver Post front page of the entertainment section, so we're pretty thrilled about that. And my online ticket sales boosted right away as soon as that came out on Friday. So we're pretty jazzed about all the exciting things going on around the festival and the circus this year. We have delivered the posters outside of the city, and everybody in Wheat Ridge pretty much knows about this festival, but we focused on Lakewood, Arvada, Highlands, and just general areas outside of the city with our marketing this year, and then to a broader picture by going through the Post. So we've done some pretty exciting things for, to promote the circus. We also have done, we also have a great ad or write-up in Andiamo, which is the Italian newspaper. And you saw the 3D press kits that will go out, and also a bouquet of carnations compliments of the city, so thank you for doing that. And a couple of things I just want to mention about our event this year is we have a lot of events within the event, which is very exciting for us because we have the Auto Metz, the Italian exotic car show with the circus on Sunday. And then we have a lot of large groups coming in that are doing their business after hours, or their company picnic, or just tons of groups this year. So last year, the people that brought their families and bought four tickets are buying 25 and 30 and 50 tickets this year. So we're pretty excited about how this is growing and expanding. It's finally happening. So I have my sash on. I'm ready for the circus, and I hope you guys are as well, and I hope you'll all attend this year. Thank you again.
Thank you, Gina.
Mayor, council.
Mr. DeMott, we know you.
And I'm coming tonight as the chair of this year's Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival. This is the 45th annual, and I'm coming to personally invite all of you to come and check out all the new things that we've done this year. We've got a expanded lineup, great music this year. We have great headliners each night. We, of course, have the Zope Italian Circus, which we have reserved tickets for each of you for, and your families, Friday or Saturday night during the festival. And we have a great new kids' fun zone that some of our new sponsors have outpitched in for. We have a, the Wheat Ridge Police Department has put together a children's bike rodeo, and we'll be giving away some bike helmets and giving some pointers on bike safety. We, of course, have some kids' rides, jumping castles. We have a petting zoo. We have a lot of new things. We would love for you to come out and give us some feedback on how it was, and of course, invite your friends and family, and invite the public to come. Starts 4:30 to 7:30 on Friday and Saturday, and of course, the Auto Metz car show's on Sunday afterwards, and the circus goes for 10 days. So I just want to invite everybody and hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's one more person on the list. No? Anyone else wish to speak on items that are not on our agenda tonight? Nope? Okay. We go ahead with the meeting, and I forgot to mention, if you have a cellphone, please, and you haven't already done so, please silence your cellphone. Let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on, and move on to move it to item number one, which is, Ms. Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a first public input opportunity for the 2015 budget. The process for the development of the 2015 budget is underway. An important phase of this process is offering the public opportunities to provide input to city council prior to the presentation of the 2015 proposed budget. Tonight's public input meeting is the first of two meetings scheduled. A second opportunity for public input will be during the regular city council meeting on Monday, September 8.
Thank you. It looks like we may have some speakers on this particular area. Okay. Mister, yes, please do come forward.
Again, Mayor, City Council, my name is Joe DeMott again. I am now standing in front of you as the president of the Wheat Ridge Business District Board. I, this year, we have, well, as some of you know, we have a couple of members. Mayor Jay, Councilwoman Fitzgerald is our members of our business district. We give facade, sign, handicap accessibility, paint grants, and newly landscaping grant to businesses in Wheat Ridge. We, in the last year, we have spent, we have granted almost $80,000 in grant money from the city of Wheat Ridge for, to beautify and enhance our commercial corridors, our commercial buildings, some of our businesses in town and citywide. We, that money has leveraged nearly a million dollars in improvements to buildings. And last year, we actually didn't need all the money that you had, you had offered us. This year, we're asking that we increase the amount a little bit, and we're asking this year for about $75,000. And we think with that money, we can, we can improve our programs. As I've said, we've added our landscape program. We're hoping to expand on some of our programs. And we're hoping to leverage about a million and a half dollars in improvements off of that money. And I hope that we can come close to that. I'm again going to ask you about the Carnation Festival, if I can switch hats again. Last year, we did have received an increase in funding from the city by $10,000, and that money has truly allowed us to hire great planners. We've hired new bands, all new bands, better, better music. It's all free still. Admission is free. We've actually improved, as you will see next, this weekend, when you come. We've actually improved the look of the festival and the feel of the festival is all new. And we've really, really tried to make activities and events within the event. We've really spread it out. We have a dedicated kids' zone in the back. We'll have magicians and walking talent, around jugglers, and things for the kids to do in the back. We have an expanded beer garden. We have, Rotary, of course, is excited about the new beer garden. We have new food vendors and a whole new food court and a whole new look and feel. So we would ask that we could keep the funding, if you could see it in the budget, to give us the additional funding again for next year, and we'd like to keep everything going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I picked a really good night to come because I, budget night, too. My name's Gina Halasy, and I'm here representing the Zope Italian Family Circus. And I just wanted to ask that you would consider that for next year, possibly, as another sponsorship for the event to help market the city and create a destination location. I think it's working, and I think you'll see that when you come out to the event this year, based on all the different people that are coming from all over the state, really, to see this event. So I hope that you will continue to support it. I know the community's fallen in love with it, and I'm hoping that we continue to grow the event. We're on track this year to definitely meet our goals, and I'm hoping that we can get to break even this year. So we've got my fingers crossed. If things keep going, we're, just hope for no rain. So thank you again, and I hope you will consider it for 2015.
Thank you.
I'm Christine Disney, and I'm speaking tonight as a board member of Wheat Ridge 2020. And I'm here to ask that the city council and the city please to continue funding Wheat Ridge 2020. I've been on a lot of boards and have worked for nonprofits, and I have to say, I'm so impressed with how well-run Wheat Ridge 2020 is. And Britta Fisher is truly amazing administrator and just an all-around wonderful person for that organization. I've attended several of the events that we've put on this year. The Criterion, as you've heard, was very good. I've enjoyed going to the Friday Night Live events, the Cruiser Crawl's, and it's doing so much good in getting our community to feel like a community, and getting people involved, and getting them out, and getting them on the green, and becoming involved. So I think Wheat Ridge 2020 serves a very valuable service to the city, and I would ask that you would consider them in your budget planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice Hoppe, H-O-P-P-E, living District One. I also have a business in District One, and I'm the president of Wheat Ridge 2020. I'm here tonight to speak to you about maintaining, supporting Wheat Ridge 2020 and your budget process. Along with the community events that we do that Christine mentioned, we also do a couple other things, like our Building Up Business Loan Program, which is up to $50,000. It's 0% interest for the first year, 4% for the years after that. That loan program, before I was part of Wheat Ridge 2020, we utilized for our business, Compass Construction. And it actually was one of that and the Wheat Ridge Business District grants were the reasons why we opted to come to Wheat Ridge over other communities that we were looking at at the time. We were down on Tennyson Street in the Berkeley community when we moved here. We also have a home improvement loan program, which you, which is 0% interest. It's up to $25,000, and 0% interest for the first year, and then 4% for each year after that. Those programs help put private dollars back into our community. And so I would hope that you guys would still maintain doing those programs. Along with also, we have, of course, Live Local, which we have Live Local Harvest, Live Local Active. We do things like free yoga in the park, the Free Run Club each year. So those things are trying to keep our community engaged in healthy lifestyles. Then we also have the fun things like Cruiser Crawl's and the Friday Night Lives. We've been, we've been, Wheat Ridge 2020 has been integral in the strengthening the fabric in the community of Wheat Ridge. The fabric was there, but we've just been strengthening and helping build what is already there into something stronger. So thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker.
Hello, my name is still Rachel Hultin, H-U-L-T-I-N, and I'm a District Two resident at 4690 Balsam Street. And I'm up here to wear two hats tonight. I am one of the officers of the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team. And as you are considering your budget for 2015, I request that you continue your investment in building bicycle and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure. The investment that you made last year, there was a line item of $63,000 in the 2014 budget to do bike lanes on Pier Street, which, as I mentioned earlier, will begin a week from today and be done within about 10 days. And when that process was, was happening, it was really well-done with the city. They connected with the community. They got community input on how that was going to affect people along the route. And then the city did a fantastic job of recognizing additional investment was necessary to build bike facilities that service people of all ages and abilities. And I think it ended up being about $100,000 investment by the city. It's been an incredibly popular decision. It has been recognized as an opportunity to get people of all ages and abilities out and engaging with one another, and getting through our community to patronize businesses that they want to support. Looking ahead, we hope that the city will take a serious look at the CIP budget and will consider making an investment of 5% of the CIP budget to go towards bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvements. We also ask that the city continue to look for opportunities to create safe routes for children to walk and bike to school. We feel like that's an important opportunity to develop healthy habits with our youngest and most energetic citizens. And we just really recognize that our community really benefits from creating opportunities for them to be out and be active. And when people aren't on foot and on their bikes, they actually pay more attention to their environment. So supporting biking and walking is also going to develop stewardship of citizens of their community. So we just, thank you for the investment you've made, and we hope you continue to do that. All right, I'm going to switch hats, and now I'm just me again. And I just, I want to sort of carry forward previous comments about investment through Wheat Ridge 2020 and the Live Local events. I've just, that's how I first engaged with the city, was coming to a Live Local event, and it was just so accessible. And I think as we have more people coming into our community, it's just a way of bringing people in to understand, you know, who Wheat Ridge is and what kind of community we are. And it's where we develop those relationships that really knit a strong community together. So I hope that the city will continue investing in Live Local opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. That concludes our public discussion on this. This item doesn't really need a motion on it. I'm sorry, Mr. DiTullio?
I just want to make a few comments.
Sure.
So this is, it's been a while since I've actually been able to talk about the budget with council, because now I'm back on council. So a couple of things that I was hoping that we could pencil in and not necessarily vote on it tonight or discuss it tonight, but have the city manager plug these numbers into the budget so that when we start talking about it, we will have these numbers that are available to us. And a couple of things that I was thinking about was, we have our contribution fund that we give to organizations everywhere, and I was wondering if council would be interested in adding as line items to that budget, $2,500 to the Arvada Food Bank as a regular annual budget for $2,500. This is suggestions. $2,500 to the Farmers 5000 as a city sponsorship once a year. I think that we, with the Business District, based on some of the comments I've heard, the $75,000 would be necessary for next year because of the upturn in the economy. They're getting more and more applications. So I think that $25,000 would be a fair number, because it was cut back last year. And the festival, they asked for another $10,000, but I think we'll have actually some data to track. In the past, when you went to the Carnation Festival, you just basically paid every vendor, and there was no tracking of the money. This year, you will buy tickets, and you'll buy, each ticket's a dollar, I believe, and you can buy 20 tickets to 30 tickets, and then you trade those tickets into all the different vendors. So we'll have a, well, not we, but the festival will have a ticket count and sales count, how much, how many people were there, how many tickets were sold, basically. So if you buy $20 with the tickets, you can keep track of that now, so we'll have a better idea of how that money's being spent. So I think the $10,000 investment, based on that ticket sales, will give us a better opportunity. And then, oh, the last one I was hoping we could kind of consider, like I said, plug it into the budget. Patrick would highlight those when we're looking at it, was if council was still interested in looking at a $12,000 increase on the Senior Resource Bus, Senior Resource Center Bus. So those are the things that I was just, of course, I agree with the Business District, the 2020, some of the home loan and the residential and the business loans. So I was just hoping maybe we could at least plug those into the budget, and Patrick would highlight them when it comes to council, and then we could take them out or manipulate those numbers. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further, does anyone else want to add any thoughts about the budget that's on our council? And we don't need to act on any of these other suggestions at this time. This will be during our regular budget sessions. Okay. That being the case, I don't think we need to have any other conclusion on this item, and we can move on to item number two. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay, for reference, this is Council Bill 09-2014, 2014. The applicant is, in this case, this is about rezoning at 32nd and Wadsworth. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Residential 2 to Planned Residential Development, and for approval of an online development plan for property located at 7671 West 32nd Avenue and 3299 Wadsworth. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at a public hearing on June 19, 2014, and recommended approval. However, subsequent to the Planning Commission hearing, the applicant proposed a substantial modification to one of the development standards. In this case, it was maximum building coverage. Staff believes it is a significant change which could impact the character of the development, and that a record, a second review of the Plan and Commission is required. The Planning Commission public hearing date is August 21, 2014. Is a motion in order?
I'm going to go ahead and open the public meeting. There may be people, I don't believe we're going to have a staff report because of the continuance, but there may be people who have come here to speak specifically to this item. And if so, would you please come to the microphone? And I don't see anybody, so we can go ahead with the motion then unless...
Madam Mayor, we need an ordinance number, I believe?
No, we decided not, we're going to hold back on the ordinance number until it comes back officially on August 21.
Oh, we're opposed. We're continuing it.
Because of the continuance. Thank you.
Okay, I move to continue, Council Bill 09, 2014, and ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 7621 West 32nd Avenue and 3299 Wadsworth Boulevard from Residential 2 to Planned Residential Development, and for approval of an outlined development plan until September 8, 2014. Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this particular item?
Who was the second?
Mr. Pond. No discussion? Okay, let's please pull the council on item number two.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, Mr. Starke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number three. This is Council Bill Number 07, 2014, an ordinance concerning economic development and in connection therewith, amending the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program and the Business Development Zone Program within the city. At issue in this matter, this ordinance amends the Code of Laws concerning the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program, S-Step, and the Business Development Zone, BDZ, programs in order to improve the operation of the programs and to eliminate internal consistencies between them.
Do you need an ordinance number on this item?
You know, I don't have one. There's, the clerk's office has been real interesting the last week or so. I don't have that.
We can move on.
That's fine. The motion can simply be to, to approve the council bill on second reading and ordinance number will be assigned when, when the ordinance is put out for...
I can figure it out by the end of the meeting.
Fine. And even though there's no one signed up, you'll need to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to testify.
I'm going to now officially open the public meeting. Is there anyone here to testify? This says no public meeting.
That's item three, yeah.
Seeing none? Should I close? Do we have any staff presentations or...
We do, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick presentation. As Mr. Starke read into the, to minutes, these are some changes to our Business Development Zone and our Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program. Just a few minor changes that were discussed with city council at our last study session. With the S-Step program, we are increasing the, the threshold to be eligible to participate in the program from 5,000 to 10,000, meaning that a business to be eligible to participate needs to generate at least $5,000 in enhanced sales tax, or at least $10,000 in enhanced sales tax. And the other major change in the BDZ program is that we set a minimum threshold that the, to be eligible, the business has to expand at least $250,000 of private investment into the program to be eligible. And then there's a tiered structure up to a million dollars or more, which determines the amount of rebate they get back in their bus, use tax and/or building permit fees. So those are the two major changes.
Okay. All right, once again, since I was out of order, is there, once again, any public discussion? Anyone else who would like to? Nope. All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing and we'll have a motion. The public hearing is closed. May I have a motion and then we can have discussion?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 07, 2014, an ordinance concerning economic development and in connection therewith, amending the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program and the Business Development Zone Program within the city on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second?
It's been made and seconded to approve the motion, but is there any some council discussion, please?
I can tell you this will be ordinance number 1553.
1553, thank you. Do I have any discussion on this particular motion? Mr. Starke?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Patrick, I had just a couple of clarifications and maybe I'm not reading this right. In our definitions on owner or proprietor, I was confused about whether a shopping center owner needed to be, well, I got, if it's a, if it's a single, if a single property, then it would be the owner of the real estate. Is that correct? The owner or operator of the individual business.
Owner proprietor, you mean? Correct.
And then in the case of a shopping center, the owner of the real property would, would benefit from the, and this is, I believe we're talking about the S-Step program, right?
Yeah, this is S-Step.
Yeah, this is the S-Step program. So the owner of a shopping center would be able to apply for it?
Correct.
If there was more than one business in the shopping center?
Correct. Otherwise, they'd be just considered an owner of the individual business.
And that would be provided that the owner is the owner or lesser of the individual business operated therein? So if you have a shopping center, it's really only for the benefit of the owner of the real estate who is also operating the shopping, operating the business?
Well, owner or lesser of the individual businesses operated thereon, so I think it could be both. It could be if they're just, let's say, in the case of our Applewood Shopping Center Regency is the lesser, they could apply for an S-Step agreement. But they could also be an owner of one of the individual businesses, is my read on that.
Sure. I don't think there's, like, you... It just seems like that they need, they're, the owner, let's see, provided that the owner is the owner, he is the owner, or the lesser of the individual businesses operated thereon. So it just sounds to me like the, the owner is the one that's required to be the individual Maybe you've got a, sort of a better reading on that than I do.
Well, if the, if the shopping center owner also owns a retail generating business, then yes. And understanding that it's S-Step, that's what you're sharing is retail sales taxes. So if you had, I'm thinking out loud here, but I think I'm right. If you had a, an owner of a shopping center, or just an owner, that is not an owner of the business, of the proprietor of the business, therefore, that owner, while they own the property, isn't generating, their activities are not generating sales tax. Their lessees activities are generating sales tax. And it's, it's just that the generator of the sales tax that you can share sales tax with. So I think it's probably possible that you'd have a shopping center owner that would also own a business, a franchise business or something in the shopping center.
But you don't read it to require that owner to, to operate that business?
Well, to be able to get S-Step, you have to have a retail generating business.
Okay.
So if you're a shopping center owner, all you own is the real estate. You don't own any of the businesses. If, if, so therefore, no S-Step for you. But if you're a shopping center owner and you, you have the whole shopping center and then you've also got a pad and you actually run the Red Lobster, then fine. You can apply with respect to that business and, and get tax increments based upon the sales tax from Red Lobster, if you wish. But I think the, the, sort of the gatekeeper criterion is that you own or operate a business that generates sales tax. You can do that as an individual owner or as a shopping center owner, but do you generate sales tax? If you do, you get an, you're eligible for the program. And I, and I think 2276 says that well enough. If we need to say it better, we, we can, but, but I think it, I don't, I don't think you can read it another way, personally.
Okay. Okay. And then Patrick, I had another one in 2276. It, it looks like, to me, like we're putting the, sort of the start date for the, for the generation of the revenue at, well, you need to do that within the 12 months following the approval of an agreement. And do you think that that would be, that council would be ahead of the process? And, I mean, it seems like that maybe, you know, that if, if a business came and sought this sort of assistance from the city, they would be doing it well in advance, perhaps, of opening their facility.
Correct. And I, I think this reads that, again, in order to be eligible for the S-Step program, they need to generate, once, once the agreement is signed with city council and approved, the next 12 months, they need to generate at least $10,000 in incremental sales tax. Because it's, it should be, once, once agreement's signed, and, and the date, sometimes the term date in the agreement is not necessarily the same date as it's signed. I think with our King Supers deal, we did a different date, because it, it usually depends on once their improvements are done. And that's when they should be generating increment, hopefully. So, but 12 months following approval of agreement is, is typical for, for these agreements, because that's, that's the first, first year of, of the agreement when we're seeing if, if the improvements they made to their business is going to generate that, that increment.
Right.
Yeah, does that answer your question?
I think your question is, fine, we approved the agreement on June the 1st. They get busy and they do, they do construction, they're not open until October. And the, the year is already running, so now they only have eight months to produce the $10,000. And that's true with respect to how it's written. If you wanted to give them a full year of retail activity, you'd have to say 12 months following the, the effective date of the agreement would be one way to do it, and then we could just make the agreement effective upon the CO, you know, for the...
Or opening for business or something.
Or, or, yeah. And, and that would vary from business to business, so you probably just want to say effective date of the agreement, allowing people negotiate the agreements and pick the right date.
And I wasn't, I wasn't for sure what the, what the term approval of an agreement, actually.
That would be approval here.
That's the city council approval.
Yeah. But you're right, I think that's a good point. We, I think effective, the effective date of the agreement, because we've done that in the past with, with other agreements, and the one that comes to mind is King Supers, because they weren't ready, they weren't going to have their improvements ready, so...
Yeah, it would seem to me if we, if we truly intended to give the grantee, you know, 12 months in order to generate the additional revenue, then, then I would, okay, thank you.
Good point, thank you.
Proper motion when you get to it would be just to substitute the words effective date for the word approval in section 2276, and that'd do it.
You made a motion already, didn't you? Oh, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Jattulio?
Mr. Daw, we already had a motion and a second. So I, I, we're under just discussion right now.
Okay. Take a, a motion to amend.
So I'd like to make that amendment. And Mr. Daw, would you mind stake the, stating the amendment?
Sure, the amendment would be to amend section 2276, last sentence, to substitute the words effective date for the word approval.
Second?
Let me, let me ask a question, if we don't, if I don't mind. If, if I understand this correctly, if some, if a person owns a shopping center, okay, and they own, within that shopping center, they own their own retail business, the S-Step would be over that retail business and any other person within that shopping center, a separate person. They could obtain their separate own S-Step, and of course, the value has to reach a certain portion towards effective. I just wanted to be really clear about that. That that shopping center owner wouldn't be the, wouldn't have the authority over the whole shopping center, but just any retail establishment within?
Yeah, by author, I think authority is probably the wrong word. It would be the shopping center owner doesn't have the ability, or not the eligibility to apply for S-Step for any, any business other than the business the shopping center owner happens to own.
And if there's a TIF agreement in place as well, would that be, would they both be in, could that be a possibility?
It's a different subject.
Different subject? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have lots of overlying programs here and it's, 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 there's sort of layers. We don't necessarily preclude people from having TIF if there's S-Step. There's sometimes, it's a consideration. I don't think there's a prohibition, but, you know, I, I just don't, don't think that, that does not get read into whether you approve or don't approve changes to the S-Step program.
Got it, thank you. As far as this is a subject as this motion is concerned, that is a different, I understand, I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, we had an amendment and a second, we need to vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You've got a pending motion to amend.
Yes, we have a, a motion to amend, and I, we've made the motion and we need to have a second on that.
Mr. Pond did.
Mr. Pond did the second, okay. So do we need further discussion? That was, that was on, the, the motion is, the vote is on the amendment, so we could go forward with that, please? Give me a vote on that. Okay, now the motion has been amended. Is there further discussion on the motion overall?
The motion to amend carries seven, zero.
Do we need further discussion? Nope. Do we go back? Are we, do, can we?
On the original motion?
All right, let's call for the original motion then.
We're going to vote on the main motion now?
Right.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
As amended.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. And moving on to item number four, Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy to introduce Council Bill Number 10-2014, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 4th, 2014 election concerning an increase in sales tax and use tax rate and revenue bonds to finance public works and parks and recreation infrastructure projects. At issue, city council directed staff to move forward with ballot questions. Requesting a 1% increase to the city's sales tax and use rate and revenue bonds. To include the question on the 2014 ballot, the city council must set the final ballot language and submit to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder by September 5th. Setting the ballot language by ordinance requires a first reading on August 11th and a second reading and public hearing on August 25th to meet this deadline. Is a motion in order?
Yes, please.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 10-2014, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 4th, 2014 election concerning an increase in the sales and use tax rate and revenue bonds to finance public works and parks and recreation infrastructure projects. On first reading, ordered published, public hearing set for Monday, August 25th, 2014 at 7:00 PM in city council chambers, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. May I have a vote with the council, please?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item number five?
Yes, item, thank you. Item number five is Council Bill Number 11-2014, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 4th, 2014 election concerning a street width designation for portions of 38th Avenue. On July 14th, city council held a public hearing and designated a street width for 38th Avenue Corridor Project and directed staff to prepare an ordinance to submit the street width question to the voters. To submit a ballot question to the voters at the November 14th election, the city must have the finalized ballot language to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder by September 5th. To meet this deadline, an ordinance would be scheduled for first reading on August 11th with second reading and public hearing scheduled for August 25th. And then before I make the most, I just wanted to read the ballot question into the record. Section one, ballot question referred, shall a street width for 38th Avenue between Uppam Street and Marshall Street be established by city council in order to implement the vision of 38th Avenue Corridor Plan to revitalize 38th Avenue Corridor between Uppam Street and Marshall Street into a Main Street business district to include wider pedestrian sidewalks, amenity zones with landscaping and seating areas, on-street parking, public art, and community gathering places, such that the street width for 38th Avenue will be established at 47 feet from Uppam Street to High Court, 41 feet from High Court, 230 feet east of High Court, and 35 feet from 230 feet east of High Court to Marshall Street? That's the ballot question. Is a motion in order?
Please.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2014, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 14th, 2014 election concerning a street width designation for portions of 30th Avenue. On first reading, ordered published, public hearing set for Monday, August 25th, 2014 at 7:00 PM in city council chambers, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
May I have a second?
Second?
A second from Mr. Fitzgerald. Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item number six, Mr. Urban.
I'm pleased to introduce resolution number, sorry. Thank you. I'm pleased to introduce resolution 45-2014, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the clerk and recorder for Jefferson County, Colorado, and the city of Wheat Ridge regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct, uh, conduct... of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the November 4th, 2014 coordinated election.
Do you want to read the issue? Do you want to read the issue?
No, I think that's pretty clear.
Would you like to go ahead and move, make the motion then?
I move to approve Resolution 45-2014, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the county of Jefferson, state of Colorado and the city of Wheat Ridge regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the November 4th, 2014 coordinated election.
May I have a second?
Sec.
Second by Ms. Langworthy? No discussion? Looks like we're ready to pull the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item number seven, Ms. Wooden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a Resolution Number 46-2014, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the clerk and recorder for Jefferson County, Colorado and the city of Wheat Ridge regarding the production of a mailed notice concerning ballot issues. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge will participate in a coordinated election on November 4th, 2014. The attached resolution and intergovernmental agreement, IGA, must be executed and forwarded to Jefferson County by Tuesday, August 26, 2014. The documents refer to the respective duties of the county and the city of Wheat Ridge concerning the production of a mailed notice concerning ballot issues that will be submitted to eligible voters of the city of Wheat Ridge. Taber requires that notices containing election ballot issues of multiple jurisdictions be sent as a package where such jurisdictions overlap. Is the motion in order?
Yes, it is.
I move to approve Resolution Number 46-2014, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the county of Jefferson, state of Colorado and the city of Wheat Ridge regarding the production of a mailed notice concerning ballot issues.
Second.
Second by Mr. Giattulio. Any discussion? Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
That concludes the business meeting of our, of our meeting tonight. May I have any city manager's matters?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind all of our public, our annual closure of the Rec Center is coming up, August 24th through the 29th for our annual maintenance and cleaning. Annual pass holders can use the Golden Recreation Center at no charge that week as long as they bring their Wheat Ridge card with them. And also, the city received a nice recognition recently in the, I'm trying to think which magazine it was, Denver Business Journal. One of the top 10 Colorado cities on the rise. It's great, great news for Wheat Ridge. That was based on our population growth of 4.6%, employment growth of 5.8%, and income growth of 17%. So I think we're actually number six on that list of top 10. So it's great to see Wheat Ridge amongst these other great cities. Thank you.
That sounds good. City Attorney Matters?
Actually, I do have one tonight, or it's really a request that council take a motion, direct me to bring forward an ordinance. Regularly, we advise the police department on edits to its training bulletins. And we did that recently and that inspired us to look at one of the code sections in the municipal code on interference with police officers in the discharge of their duties. And after we looked at that, we realized that, that it's, you know, from a constitutional standpoint, it's really overbroad. It basically says that you can't not only interfere with a police officer and the exercise of his or her duties, but, but you can't sort of threaten reprisal against that officer. So that extends really to some forms of protected speech. I'm being questioned by an officer and I say, "I want your badge number because I'm going to report you." That's protected speech. That's, that should not be illegal. And what we have is a really old code section that really doesn't recognize the distinctions between true interference with the police officer and the exercise of his duty, standing in the way and the officer's trying to get to some evidence behind me. Okay, that is understandable, but, but saying, you know, "I'm going to talk to your superior," that's disrespectful, but that's not illegal. And you can't be arrested or charged for that. And the code section that we have is, is overbroad. I will say that, that our officers, from their training bulletin standpoint, know not to, not to arrest people or charge people for that. But we should have a code section that mirrors present law, especially since, you know, regularly we get younger, young officers that will look at a code section and not understand those subtleties. So it's a long way of saying I'd like to be able to bring forward an ordinance to amend Code Section 16156 to comply with, with current law. And if someone would make a motion to that effect, I'd be grateful and you'll see it in the fullness of time.
May I have a motion on that?
So moved.
So moved? Do we have a so moved second? A so second? We've got it both. All right. Any more, Mr.?
No, that's all.
Oh, we do have to vote on that. Of course we do. Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elected officials matters. Do you want to start, Mr. Giattulio?
Thank you. I want to welcome back Mr. Fitzgerald. Hope your knee's doing better. Welcome back. So you can't kick the can down those street now, maybe. I don't know, so... Then I just wanted to remind everybody at the high school level, teachers are back this week and next Monday, 18th, is freshman only, 7:25 till noon. And we'll see you in a week, freshmen.
Mr. Starke?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody, school is coming back in session. We will have a lot of young children walking to and from school. So just be careful out there and then also, this is a high time for traffic enforcement as well. So just be on the watch out and slow down and just, everybody keep safe out there. That's it.
Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Fitzgerald, who's come back to us.
Yes. Nothing tonight, but I would like to thank Councilman Giattulio for the welcome.
Ms. Langworthy?
Yes, one thing. The Live Local, the next Live Local event is this Thursday night at Little Brazil from 5 to 7. So the Little Brazil is kind of tucked right between Gold's Market and Davey's Chuck Wagon Diner. So it's a, it's a little, little restaurant, but they have some terrific Brazilian food. So if you're interested in trying something new, they have the best desserts ever.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the people who have put so many hours into planning the Carnation Festival. And I hope we get a great turnout. But thank you to all those people because they've spent a lot of time on, on planning all of that.
Great. I think that's it for the evening.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask who, who was the second for the wording for...
For Ms...
That... No, the ballot question for the sales tax issue.
Mr. Starke?
Mr. Pond, second was?
Mr. Starke.
Starke. Thank you. And no, I don't have anything tonight.
I believe I can close the meeting. Meeting, the meeting, the meeting is adjourned.